Thank you.
Bite into that tree.
Take a knife and.
My fingers get cold.
Your teeth are bleeding. Well, true. I can't eat.
That's why I'm frosting.
This is for D and R's in calls today. How's it going? Specifically for them. All right, guys, it's eight eleven, so we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, Tom, you already did roll call, correct? Okay, so let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, we are now open for public comments. Mr. Linder, do you have anything to discuss on that? Okay, um, I think everyone has an agenda in front of them. Um, we do have one change to the agenda. Uh, we'll put it in our first item of new business. And this is to discuss our FEMA grant and, um, who can be the decision makers on that. Any other changes? Okay, if you can have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, so our agenda is approved. Uh, we have our November board meeting minutes to approve. Does everyone have a chance to review them? Uh, if I could have a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Harlan?
I'll second.
Kara, any discussion, questions, concerns about those minutes? Okay, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, those are approved. I'm gonna go ahead and also approve, uh, oh, I'm so sorry, you guys. Hold the train, this is our consent agenda. We are going to approve the agenda, the minutes of the November board meeting, the policy meeting minutes, the recruit and retain committee meeting minutes, and the financial report. So if I could please get a motion out to approve consent agenda items.
I'll make that motion.
Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Harlan, okay, now would be the time where we could discuss anything from any of these five items.
I just had a question. We've got the financial, uh, reports on the, um, disbursements. I see that we had, um, let me just see where it's at. iPads, it just said special ed iPads, Apple, special ed iPads, about thirty-six hundred dollars. And I was just wondering, I'm assuming those are for, are they for staff and students? Or, and then is it coming from the special ed funds?
Yeah, we have the additional funds that we have.
For both.
For both.
Yes, it is coming from our special ed. And it's K-12.
K-12, okay, okay, good, good. Um, I think there are some other ones there. And then there was a, I'll find it here on page six. Um, there was, okay, the summer program, I think it was like twenty-two thousand dollar expense. Is that the whole summer program? Um, for the food and all the, all the expenses and then? I was a little surprised that it was here at the end of the year.
That's just, that's the food bill from Indian Head for two months. And everything now is all getting charged to that summer feeding program because we have free lunch for everyone.
Okay.
So it's gotta be coded to that program.
So it's actually, it's existing?
This is just our regular food service bill. So for some reason, we paid two and one at one sitting. Normally it's not quite that high.
Okay.
They email us everything and sometimes Jared, I think I missed twenty-four of that on to me.
So it's actually the regular?
It's just your regular food program, but.
And it's several months, okay.
Every month, we pay Indian Head quite a bit of money. But, um, it gets, you know, because we're doing that free lunch for everyone.
Right, right.
It's, it's part of that summer feeding program, so that's why that name popped up in there. Because we have to use that code.
All right, those are the only questions I had.
Carrie, did you have anything else from financials? No. Uh, if there are no further, uh, questions or concerns about consent agenda items, um, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, our consent agenda items are approved. Old business, we are moving to recruit and retain. Is that you, Kara?
Yep, I can review that. Um, so we met last Wednesday. Um, we discussed the five-year strategic plan, um, some of the priorities. The first one were, was offer competitive wages and benefits to attract and retain high-quality employees. Um, we discussed the HRA contribution was increased to three thousand, um, per employee per year. The curriculum and extra duty pay was increased to the base hour, hourly salary, which will be effective July first. Um, all retirees will receive post, post-employment benefits at the time of retirement. Um, the next priority was maintaining effective communications between staff, administration, board, and community. Um, we talked about the communication subcommittee meeting minutes, um, are to be reviewed at the recruit and retain meetings. So just a, a note that those minutes should be attached to the recruit and retain agenda, uh, for future meetings. So we can review those there. Um, and that there will be a mid-year and end-of-year thirty-minute meeting for staff to ask questions about the point system. Um, the next priority was providing a positive work environment. Mr. Linder continues to send a Let's Talk email after the board meetings as well as be available on Fridays, um, in the morning for staff questions. Um, new apparel for staff was ordered, also looking at ideas of catering lunch periodically and looking at other collaboration activities and staff socials. Um, the next priority was to provide opportunities for professional development, including mentoring program. Uh, due to COVID, some of this has been put to the wayside, but looking to reestablish for the second part of the year. Um, tearing up veteran teachers with new staff. Um, mentors that were established last year are, are checking in on those teachers. Um, surveys, we'll start back up on asking staff's input, um, in professional development needs. And there was also remote and virtual trainings held. Um, other discussions, um, was around the point system. Um, discussion had around how it is gonna be a little bit harder this year to obtain just because of COVID. They were looking, um, to the board and administration for additional incentives at the end of the year or some sort of financial benefit because of the, um, extra work stress that teachers are continuing to put in due to COVID. Um, it's been difficult to get points this year, so, um, they are looking, suggestion was to look to us on how we can acknowledge all the different tasks assigned to them this year. Um, and that it's important that we recognize and appreciate all staff. Um, it was also asked that we review, uh, re-review the point system after the new year, um, looking at those point values to see what qualifies for a point, et cetera. Um, as far as professional development, um, in-service time and professional development time has been limited. Uh, Mr. Deepman indicated he's got some ideas and, um, things like that to review in regards to professional development. Um, we had discussion around the connection with others and how we can be creative and bring people together. It's been difficult, of course, this year trying to have that connection due to COVID. Um, we talked about connecting new teachers as an example. Um, and then we will review, uh, that point system in February. We set up a meeting for that. Any questions?
Thank you, Kara. Okay, we will move into new business. Uh, our first point of business is gonna be to discuss the FEMA grant.
Okay, um, so Jordan Bus, uh, our grant writer for the FEMA grant, um, just let me know the other day, we already passed, um, to accept the FEMA grant, but we had to go to the city, city council to have them, it has to run through them. So we did have our, uh, a resolution to authorize that from the city. Uh, just this week, he had said, um, that FEMA has changed that and, um, that we can be our own, what would you say, authorization. So, um, what that will do is that will save him a handful of steps in the application process. So I would recommend that we, as a school district, um, authorize myself and/or, um, Jen Kadoff as, um, able to sign a tornado shelter federal emergency agency grant for us.
Okay, if I can have a motion to approve that change to our FEMA grant.
Also move.
Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
Carrie, any discussion questions about that change? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? I love staying from that, Tom, since I was included in the motion. Thank you. All right, next point of business is, um, we're going to hire a Spanish translator, um, special education para professional. Let's start with the translator.
Um, we do have a Spanish translator, uh, slash English language learner support, um, that is working right now, um, on a limited basis. I'm recommending that we hire Yolanda Arch for this part-time position.
Could I have a motion to hire Mrs. Arch?
I'll make that motion.
Kara?
I'll second.
Harlan, all right. Uh, all those in favor say aye if no one has any discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, welcome, Mrs. Arch. We would also like to hire a special education para professional.
We have, uh, Mary Wilikowski as a part-time or, I should say, a limited-time special ed para. Um, she is in with, uh, Mrs. Curtis's room. And we've been talking with Mrs. Curtis, everything's going very well with that. So, um, she will be there until, for a limited time. So I would recommend hiring Mary Wilikowski as a special ed para.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to hire Mrs. Wilikowski. We're moving to hire Mrs. Wilikowski. Kim?
Oh.
Davey, second. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, welcome. Thank you. Uh, we would like to move on to discuss and approve our Clark Pony Immunization and Flu Clinic contract.
So what this is, um, Brittany Mays just handed this out. And basically what it is, is basically an, uh, an understanding agreement that, uh, we would, uh, for next year, hold our flu vaccination, um, here and we'd allow Clark Pony Health to come in and do that here. So I have the, I have the contract here and just need your approval that we do that. And I would say if we did it this year, I would recommend continuing to do it. I think it's a very good thing, not only for our staff and students, but also for the community that can pull up and get to the flu shelter.
Uh, Mr. Linder, I just wanna clarify something. There's nothing in this memorandum of understanding that clarifies a flu immunization. It actually talks about using our grounds and equipment for disease prevention and control activities, mass immunization clinic operations, and wish to cooperate with the health department for such purposes. So it, it's a little bit broader spectrum than just a flu immunization. So I just wanna make sure we all recognize that warning, that wording here before we approve this.
So with that, I do have this layer in the, in the agenda, but this will roll right into it. Um, so the vaccination that is coming out for COVID, this would lie underneath that also. So we would offer to give the COVID vaccination, this would cover it, we do it through also, so.
Can we just still, uh, let's get a motion there, I have a few more questions over there. Could we get a motion out there to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Loyola School District and the Clark Pony Health Department?
I'll make the motion.
Harlan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Carrie? Um, anybody speak up, definitely. I just wanna make sure, um, you know, like this year when we did, we said we could do the flu clinic, but we did not invite the community to come into our school just because we wanna keep contact down. You know, and here, you know, it says we can, I just wanna make sure there's no word in here that holds us to say they're coming within our school. I mean, it says we have sixty days where we can terminate the contract, but I wanna make sure we still have that, that control over.
Of who we let in.
Who and what and when, I mean, that still are. So if anybody sees anything that's concerning, I'm not really seeing that wording, but I just wanna be sure.
And in talking with Brittany, um, she said, especially with that flu or the COVID vaccination, we would, we would make it more, just the district or the staff that we want to do and/or students, whoever would want to out of our district, so.
Not necessarily community.
Not necessarily community.
Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about this memorandum?
I'm assuming they probably have similar ones with other schools.
Yes.
So every school would probably have the same, same type of agreement, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yes.
If they, they would like to have the, probably the availability of being able to do that for, you know, if we choose to for the staff and students.
Whether every school does it, that's beside the point.
Right.
It is offered to, for Clark Pony.
It happened, you mean, for a number of years here though.
Mm-hmm.
When the flu shot.
Right, right.
The COVID PDP, I guess, yes, but they've been doing it a number of years. Yeah, it's always been great until we got to a pandemic, Ken. So, okay, um, then we'll go ahead and all those in favor of the memorandum of understanding, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so that memorandum is approved. Next would be, uh, discuss and approve the bus contract addendum.
So in talking with the bus company, um, we have tentatively settled on, um, ten ninety percent for the bus rolls if we do get closed more than two weeks. So a long-term closure of our school building would, we would still pay ninety percent of our bus rolls, and that is it.
All right, if I could have a motion to, um, approve the bus contract addendum at ninety percent should we be closed two weeks or longer.
Make that motion.
Davey, is there a second? One second. Kim, any concerns, discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. Linder, we have that addendum finally. All right, so now we're gonna move into, um, to discuss and approve our sick day policy, um, which is also the FFCRA Act.
Okay, so as of December thirty-first, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act will be done. And that is for leave for staff members that, um, whether are quarantined, um, have COVID, or have, need childcare for COVID, for quarantine reasons. So, um, right now, um, as our teachers, we have a contract with them. And, uh, if they are, if we send them home and they're quarantined, we have paid them full because they do, they are teaching from home. And, uh, that has worked very well for us so far. And I think we keep that aspect of it. Now, if they are at home for, because of sickness, um, or if they have childcare that they have to be at home for and they cannot teach, um, then I'm recommending that they use their, their sick days for that. And utilize those. So, um, if it becomes more than that, then we need to take a look at what we wanna do with that. Do we wanna kind of follow the FFCRA's item of paying them two-thirds if they cannot do their duties and their sick time is all up, or do we keep it, or they, we do something different? So we have a little bit of time to, to kind of take a look at that. And as far as support staff, um, they will use their sick time and, um, and if they aren't here and they're out of sick time, then they would just, they would get paid.
But if they're sent home from quarantine from school, they're still being paid?
If they are, if we send them home for quarantine, yes, then, then we are paying them. So this is not something else where if they're quarantined from someone outside of our school building because of that, then that's where they have to utilize their sick time.
All right, so the, the motion I think we need to put out there would be to, um, so are we really ready to approve this right now?
I, I think we're, we can, we'll be tabled to the approval till January.
But I just, I wanna be really clear so that everybody hears the same message. So all staff in the building, if they are sent home from school, they will be paid. If you are quarantined due to close contact somewhere else, you will need to use your PTO. Once your PTO runs out, that's kind of where we're at right now, is if we're going to continue that two-thirds pay.
Correct.
Or when you're out, you're out unless you've been quarant, you know, sent home from school. Okay, so that's where our discussion lies here. Is everybody comfortable tabling this till next month? So if I could have a motion to, uh, table this discussion till next month?
I'll make that motion.
Carrie?
I'll second.
Harlan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Uh, let's, uh, discuss our possible twenty-one, twenty-two master schedule.
All right, we should have in front of you, um, a revised schedule. Um, giving you a cover. So we did not, we did not do anything with, uh, the days that are already off, whether it's for, uh, in-service or, um, vacation. Um, we did add, as you can see, seven days throughout the next six months. Could give them work days to catch up. As an administration, we sat down and felt this is, this is a good mixture of, of, time for them to work and also to mix in with our, our in-service or professional development days. We made certain that we have at least a half a day per month to do professional development with our staff.
Wait, Mr. Linder, are we on the right?
These are, this is star workdays.
This is star workday, so we're, this is, we're actually on six point seven right now. We go this one, it's okay, it's okay. We'll just switch them. So we're discussing and approving our star work, it's okay, our star workday schedule right now. We'll go back to the master schedule.
Okay.
It's okay, just keep going.
All right.
What does star mean again?
Students at risk.
Students that are at risk.
Students that are at risk, okay. All right, so.
So those are days that are virtual, and then students that are struggling can come in those, on the two days. Okay, um, on March eighteenth, here's one change. We have, um, it is supposed to be a day, half-day with students. We're proposing a half-day with staff only. Other than that, that would be the only change to what we already have as a calendar. And like I said, as administration, we feel comfortable with, with the in-service days and the weekends. It should be, should be good. Hopefully this gets out right away that our families are prepared for those five days.
We'll send something home with each of the kids?
Yeah. Get it on Facebook and on WhatsApp.
Okay, um, if we could have a motion, please, to approve our star workdays during the year of the year.
I'll make the motion.
Carrie?
I'll second.
Kara, any questions or concerns about these changes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? If you see a request, I'm sure the teachers approve, I appreciate this.
All right, we jump ahead?
Nope, it's okay, we're gonna head back to six point five and we're gonna look at our, um, twenty-one, twenty-two master schedule.
Okay, um, what we had, we've had some discussion, um, as administration for the last, eh, couple of months. Um, we have talked to, um, both elementary and, uh, junior senior high, um, just looking at some different things. COVID, uh, basically directed us to change in, in, to the block from our eight-period day and we're just kind of looking at something, uh, something kind of maybe in the, in the, in between, between the eight-period day and our four, um, four-block schedule. So, uh, Mr. Deepman has kind of looked at a number of different things and, and kind of tooled an example of what, um, a trimester, five-period day would, would look like. So, uh, we're, we're looking at some different things and, um, just kinda see what your thoughts are. I'm not looking for, um, any approval, just looking at a discussion of it. So, go ahead, Mr. Deepman.
Yeah, so a draft copy basically is what you have in front of you. Um, so back in October, um, at a staff meeting with the junior, senior high, just started to talk about next year and get some feedback about how things are going this year. And so at that point in time, it was evident from the staff that they, they, although thrust into a longer, um, periods of a teaching responsibility, they were enjoying that opportunity. Um, so that was some good feedback. We talked about it again in November. And, um, what they, what they really were looking for is, you know, a visual, something they could kind of put their hands on and see, because in October, we talked about, hey, eighty-five is great or eighty-three is great, but sometimes it gets a little long. Um, and so, um, conversation started about, you know, a trimester. Um, I've had some experience with it and so just met, you know, talked to the staff about what does that mean? What does that look like? So it's kind of that middle ground, as Mr. Linder said, where you're shooting for about seventy minutes of instruction time. Um, so it's right in the middle of what you would say a conventional, you know, eight-period day versus a, a block day is. Um, and so the staff asked, they said, is there a way they could see what a year would look like in a trimester, um, format? So basically, I worked, um, then through this and took what we currently teach with the staff that we have and laid it into a trimester format, which is basically five periods a day. Um, and again, you try to target that sixty-five to seventy minutes a period and how that would lay out with your lunches. Um, get was something we talked about, we've had continued discussions on that. Um, we've also had some conversation about what would it look like, um, to move from a junior high to a middle school and, and, and build that team as well. So the hardest part would be to, you know, see what it looks like. So, um, I guess I took the approach, let's see what it looks like, because it's easy, easier to take it away and not do it versus trying to add it to it later. Um, so we, so this one, this draft copy is built with that, um, that formation of, of a middle school kind of concept within a school and, uh, and, and building your teams that way. So, um, what, what again, kind of, this was then given to the staff. Um, Nancy and I, o- over probably the last month or so, we have had conversations with Mr. Linder and, and after lis- listening to different things, you know, uh, we, we put together kind of an overlay of a, of potentially what it would look like as a district schedule, because that's one of the things that we have talked about. How can we move, because she's gotten a lot of feedback with some of our, um, our specialists on how to build in, you know, intervention time and what it would look like to have people doing things at certain times. Um, we share staff, uh, K through twelve, um, so that's, again, can be challenging. Um, as, and so we looked at. Um, as, and so, we looked at, is there a way, or is there an idea out there that may be possible where we could look at a district schedule? So, although it might look different and feel different in different grades, but collectively as a district, could we match things up? So, we're making use, uh, efficient and effective use of, of all of our personnel, all of our specialists. Um, and the last page is just a stab at that, um, where you'll just see a snapshot of elementary that, um, how that, and it really, it really is just a showing you how we use shared staff and who that would be. So, your shared staff would be, that we have from K-12 is our music, our art, our financial literacy, guidance? I think that's probably, there's like four of them. And trying to see if there's, there's, if there's some opportunities there. So, uh, again, we've had, both had opportunities to kind of share some stuff with the staff. I did a survey with the high school, junior high staff, um, and just asking them about what's their preference? Uh, eight-period, four-period, five-period? Uh, it was almost 80% was five-period, um, looking at a trimester. How many minutes do they prefer for GET? Uh, we know that it's important, but we're, the, the verdict is still out there about how many minutes and what, what the intent is for. That would say the, the majority of the people feel that it is, the intent would be to use it for intervention time, use it for enrichment time, and use it for some class or club meetings. Uh, other options were, um, that were lower, were study hall and maybe some department meetings. So, again, in line with what we're thinking. That time needs to be structured, it needs to be academic time. So, our kids that need things are getting things, and our kids that, um, are getting it, what kind of things can we do to enrich their learning in that capacity? Possibly looking at though, some ideas were brought up about GET not being at the end of the day, being at the middle of the day. That received a lot of positive feedback about moving that, um, and then, you know, going forward. So, so really what you see is again, a draft, um, of just what we currently have and how it will fit in. I can tell you that the departments are updating the course description book. Um, so you, in January, you will see in front of you an updated course description book for approval. That will include, uh, some different electives and a little different look maybe with some of our courses. And for example, I would describe that as, in our English department, there's a real strong push for, from our English teachers to, um, to kind of offer a English nine or an English 10 experience, a college preparatory experience, but then give some kids some choices for English, whether it's creative writing, whether it's a novels class, whether it's a speech class, um, a literature class, a theater or drama class. And, uh, our new English teacher, Mr. Adams, has, has some thoughts about what he would like to call like a real-world English. So, really tailoring it to the, the kids and, and see what their interests are. But some very neat ideas and a way to use resources that we have. Um, so you'll see some of those things. Um, and that's one thing that the staff has really kind of gravitated towards with a, with a trimester, is the opportunities for, um, growth, I guess. Um, it offers a little bit more opportunities for kids. Um, and so, just so you kind of know how the flow of this would go, if I take a one-credit class, it meets two tries out of three. Um, if I take a half-credit class, it'll meet one try. So, there's definitely positives and there's definitely negatives to a schedule like this, as there would be with, with, um, with most schedules as well. It offers, um, you know, all teachers have, you know, as long as everything goes well and next year goes back to somewhat normal, um, every teacher will have a 30-minute lunch that they don't have to necessarily have with kids all the time. And they'll have a prep that isn't necessarily with kids. So, um, as you look through try one, try two, and try three, you'll see As and Bs behind things. Uh, that's the first half of a class, and then the second half of a class would be a B. Um, with the exception of the junior high courses, they have As and Bs, those are sectioned. So, it's an A-section, which is half, and the B-section is the other half. Because our junior high courses, uh, core courses, would, math and literacy, um, or math and English, would meet all year. Um, science and social studies would, would be probably on some type of a rotation, whether it's every other day or how we work through that. But math and English would be every day all year. So, I think we figured out about a 70-hour increase of, of contact time over the year in our, in our math and our reading, um, English area. So, definitely some perks there, um, addressing the number of instructional minutes we're getting in those two subjects at that age. Um, there, there can be some, a lot of good things that could be said about that, um, at that age. So, yeah, outside of that, as you look through it, um, I, I'm sure there's questions and, and comments and stuff. Um, I guess the, the staff has had a chance to look at this, provide me some feedback now through the survey. Um, the reason for, um, really getting to where we're at right now is, we have a plan right now to start registering students for next year, um, starting the end of January. Um, so we, we, we would not like to delay that. We would want to stay on course with that. Um, and of course, prior to us doing that, we would really need to know what direction that we're headed for next year with the schedule, because it could play into sections, it could play into how we, um, how we go about utilizing people's time during the day and, and making sure we're, um, we're being effective and efficient as well. So, that's why this started back in October, um, to kind of keep us on track to get where we need to be in January, so we can start registering right away. So, a lot more discussion, I, I think it's, it's something that we talk about every day. Uh, but I felt it was, um, my duty to at least give them something to touch and show them what it would look like, what their day would look like. Um, the next step would be, um, obviously where we're at tonight, uh, getting it in your hands, so you all can digest it and look it over, um, from the perspective of board members and parents as well. And then, um, I would like to, to do, um, depending on, uh, the path here, but I, I think it would be good right after the holidays in early January to do some type of, type of an informational meeting. If we could, bring some parents in like we did at the beginning of the year, even if we have to do it on a limited, limited basis on multiple nights, just like a Q and A thing, because it, uh, it would be good to hear questions, comments, um, experiences, et cetera. Um, and then we would plan to also do something similar with the student body by grade group probably, and just talk to them about, um, ultimately, here's what it would look like, here's, um, it, it isn't a lot different than what they're experiencing right now. But it would be one more block of the day, and it's getting into that shift of semesters and quarters. Um, trimesters would, um, trimesters end usually in mid-November and early March. So, they cut, they, they mirror your sports seasons, um, so there are some advantages and disadvantages. They could mirror vacations, as in Thanksgiving break, it usually end right before Thanksgiving break. And then you usually end a term in early March, when you may have some type of a spring break or an extended weekend or, um, things like that. So, definitely, um, yeah, like I said, pros and cons to it.
What does ES mean?
Elementary school. So, that's where we were looking as a district, could we block people out during, during times so they could be available for our shared staff, to be available to elementary school? And it keeps the flow, um, so they're also able to fulfill middle school, junior high, or high school duties with no overlap. Because of kind of where we're at this year with thrust into a block, we have some overlap. Uh, we have a couple of classes that, uh, teachers are teaching in elementary school, and a high school class starts before the elementary class is, is over. So, we utilize some, um, staff that maybe have a prep during that time or, um, other people that can just cover that. And we have some other cases where a teacher may end an elementary class and be 10, 15, 20 minutes of time before they start a high school class. Um, so they got little chunks of time, we can't really do a lot with. So, that's, that's what we're looking at big-picture wise as a district schedule. Can we eliminate or avoid some of those? And also make it advantageous to grade-level teachers with what they can do during that time. Um, with, uh, it essentially would develop some prep, common prep time for them.
The only other question I had was when I look at, um, Mr. Reith and Mrs. Victorhun, I'm seeing six and seven for their classes. Is that supposed to be fifth, five and six?
No, so that's where you, um, this is built with the premise of a middle school, six, seven, eight. Um, so, um, bringing those three grades together as a team versus sixth grade being with elementary, it would be building a middle school instead of a junior high, basically, and how that would look. Um, and that concept, there's, you know, there's a, uh, there's advantages and disadvantages depending on how you wanna, how, how people want to approach it. Um, so when designing this, it, I felt it was more difficult to design it, looking at it that way, than just leaving it the way it is, um, because you can ultimately just eliminate a line and shift back to a similar way that we're doing it this year to make it work. Um, if that's a course we don't choose, but, um, if we were to go that route to try to, you know, all of a sudden scramble and try to build it in and redevelop this whole thing, um, that would make it a little more, it'd be a little more time-consuming. So, it's easier for me to do the work on the front side and take it out than on the backside and, and have to inject it.
Any questions on the possible master schedule?
I think it's a good idea to have the informational meetings and get the word out before we approve it. So, that way, if there's some concerns by parents or even staff that, you know, we hadn't thought of or, you know, but it, it looks like it is a good mix of, you know, you know, when, as far as the time, you know, having five classes plus GET versus, you know, four right now or, you know, eight. So, I think it's, it, it's a good, good mix, uh, you know, good middle ground. So, you have to just look it over, but it's, it definitely would be a change probably for the, have a middle school concept with the sixth grade, but it looks like the way you structured it.
So, that's something that we're looking at, you know, nothing set the stage.
No, no.
And we're, we're in, feedback back from the elementary?
The elementary has just gotten in on this conversation, so there's a lot still to discuss. I'm not going on the elementary. Okay. Um, we can move on to discuss and approve, uh, our school safety drills for the remainder of the year.
So, through our safety, which is part of our safety grant, we need to do, um, some safety drills, uh, so, like an intruder drill and drills like that. So, what we've done so far, we've had, um, two fire drills, a hold, which is something where they just close their doors and they just continue teaching, something's going on, whether it's a medical issue or something, or we don't want to do in the hall. And just recently, we've done an ALICE drill. So, in part of our, our safety grant, uh, we need to show and approve on a board agenda that we are doing this, um, every year. So, by January, or by January 1st, we need to have that approved and, and saying that this is what we're doing. So, and our ALICE drill was, um, okay, we have some things to work on. But, uh, we had an intruder up on, by the high school office. Elementary, I thought, did a really nice job, they evacuated. We have some question marks with, with a couple of rooms upstairs, whether they should leave or not. So, we would talk to them, and we've talked to them a little bit, and just with some doors being locked and, um, students being a little bit maybe too loud in a couple of rooms, so. And now that we take everything out of their rooms, they don't have much to deal with barricading, so. But they, some of them did the best they could, and so, um, I know that has been probably on a back burner on a lot of people's minds as, as the intruder, but we felt that we need to continue doing it, especially with, uh, the new staff, because we haven't done one yet, so, um, that's why they called the drill, so we'll keep working with that.
So, we have plans for the after-break for the rest of the school year? What is the goal, how many drills to do, or?
So, we have to do one a month.
Of any, of any sort?
You have to have, um, two tornadoes. I think, you know, as many fires as you want, um, but we are trying to establish where we get two or three ALICE in there, and at least a couple tornadoes, and then we can do a hold. Holds are very easy to do, so we do the, those are the least ones that we need to do. So, just because they are so much easier as a district to do. So, ALICE is, is the most difficult. Because there's a lot of what ifs, what if I do this, what if, just like in that, in our ALICE drill, if the intruder was down on the, on the end, if they came down downstairs and they came and went into the little gym, uh, it could be, you know, a couple shots and he could be done, so. A lot of what ifs, and it just, you know, and what we've been trained on is, the biggest thing is that doing nothing is not the right thing. Doing something is best, so. So, we will continue training and talking, drilling the staff.
Okay, we can have a motion to approve our 2020, 21, uh, school safety drills?
I'll make that motion.
Tom?
I'll second.
Harlan? Any further discussion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, then we just need to move to our, our upcoming spring elections. Who do we have up for reelection this year?
Harlan and Carrie, they both filled out their paperwork that they are running again.
Thank you, thank you.
And so far, I've had one person inquire, and I've sent paperwork, but that person has not sent back an application, so. But otherwise, no, okay. I've, no one has contacted me, has contacted you, Tom?
No, I haven't received any calls or requests.
The next item for discussion would be the state school board convention in January. That is virtual this year.
It is virtual. Everyone probably received a postcard from the WSB regarding it. If anyone is interested in participating in it, I mean, if you guys want to make an event or something where you come to the gym and watch some, I mean, come to the library and watch some things or whatever, let me know and I'll register you and we can get things set up.
Did you register me, or did anyone else volunteer to be the delegate?
I registered you as the delegate so far.
Do you know what day that is specifically?
I believe that's the last day, isn't it, Tom? When they do the.
I thought it was the second day last year.
Yeah, probably is the same, probably is the second day, I think.
Yeah, I just have to.
Says in the, they have a schedule here or not.
It's, I can always get that later.
We can make, you know, maybe have something table set up that you guys can come in and watch it virtually together, whoever wants to come in.
If we do that, that would be, what is that, that's the, um, what is the official title of that delegate? Um, this state, uh, that, what is, what is that? That's the.
You mean the, the, where they're going through the bylaws?
The general assembly?
The bylaws, yes, the bylaws, that's what I was looking for. I would say that if we could set anything up for board members to see it, that is very interesting. It's where all different, uh, you know, each school board appoints a delegate, and it's where they go, you know, last year was my first year, and we talked about things like, um, Native American mascots, mental health in schools, and, you know, like I could get up and say, well, my board feels mental health shouldn't be discussed in school, or we shouldn't deal with that. And then other boards get up, and then you vote at the end, and then the motions carry through. So, you get to hear a lot from the different school districts on. So you get to hear a lot from the different school districts on what everybody's, it's very interesting. And it's a lot of the big changes that affect our school districts, so.
That'd be on Wednesday, January 20th, in the afternoon is the delegate assembly.
Okay, delegate assembly. Thank you, Tom. So we could definitely look at maybe setting something up for that if anybody's interested. Okay, do you have anything more, Mr. Lindner, on the COVID vaccination?
No, just that, I think that's come out, and it's down the road here a little bit, but. With students, we will have to need to discuss just, if students want it, we have a spot for them, you know, same thing with staff. In talking with other supers, there seems to be like a one day period where there is some, not feeling so well after the first shot, so just love to talk a little, little discussion about, we do have staff interested in wanting to do that and how to go along to an answer, not sit the next day or whatever, so. But that's it.
Would you be getting notified through Clark County if, when, I mean, if they're, if it became available to?
I'm, I'm thinking so. So right now they're talking, you know, nursing homes.
Healthcare.
Healthcare workers.
Right.
Maybe even emergency response, you know, and I do believe teachers are in there, like phase, part B of phase one, so. Talking to spring is what I heard. Nothing, nothing confirmed, but that's what they're working on, so.
Okay, well, Ms. Liddy, can, do you want to do your report first or do you want the principals to go first?
Yeah, that's a problem.
So we have virtual parent teacher conferences and on the elementary end, we always sign up and have conference times when the parents come in. And the teachers liked this option a lot. They were very positive about it, as were the parents that they contacted, for the most part, because there, it'd be, they were able to have conversations and they knew there was a lot of time and they got right to the need of what they needed to talk about, when there were no extra, people roaming in in the halls and they didn't have to worry about any extra schedule. They knew I have to get off and decide to get to the next one. There was no, when they had downtime, they were able to work because they didn't have to worry about if there was somebody standing outside their door waiting. So it worked out really well and I think Doug and I both feel that that's the direction we want to go for spring too. It just was a really good experience. A piece I really liked is that Doug and I were able to sit down and talk to some parents during that time and kind of picture where, how they felt the virtual experience was going because you see technology on this side one way and how they're seeing the technology and what are the issues. Unless you actually sit down with a parent and hear what those issues are, we kind of didn't know. And there was a lot of just, you know, turning this button on or turning that button off or, so there was, that was very good. I have a committee set up to meet about that schedule that you guys looked at now so that we can jump into seeing how that could look and what the possibilities are for next year on what the schedule looks like on the elementary end. We continue to update the teachers' technology and the students' devices. They're doing a good job, they're really working on trying to make that better. I feel pleased we've had some of the virtual students come back into the building and that's made me very excited. We haven't had anymore go out on the elementary end, but we have had some come back. They're feeling very comfortable and they're happy to be back in the building, the kids are loving it. The mid-year assessments, so we do assessments in the elementary end, looking at math and reading skills. We weren't able to get to a whole lot of that in the fall, but we do, I do have Title I and Special Education teach, teachers working on getting that done now, which is a great help to the classroom teachers because those four teachers, they're volunteering to do that so that the rest of us can continue with the rest of their regular responsibilities. Kind of holiday things that are happening, definitely are missing out on having the Christmas concert this year, the holiday concert that we usually have. We are doing virtual and then what that is detailing is today, tomorrow and Friday, all of the 4K through sixth grade kids are being taped. And that's going to be put out on the Greyhound TV, which is the piece that's on our school website so that parents can, grandparents can watch those pieces. I think we've learned some things about how this works this year. Definitely we can do some improvements if we ever have to do a virtual presentation again. I want to put out a thank you to Amy Humke and Holly Lindner, who jumped at the chance to come up with some holiday fun activities for the elementary students. So if you have kiddos, they've been this week dressing up every day. They have candy cane day and holiday hack day and grinch day, socks day, rain gear, they're doing pajamas and then holiday shirt day. The kids get a chance to dress up and then those ladies who are even gracious enough to come up with some educational activity for math or reading to go with it. Teachers have been enjoying it, kids are enjoying it. And I also want to thank Souls because they volunteered for some special treats for the kiddos for this, this couple weeks, this week and a half too. Special thank you again to Cummings in Millsville. They have a project that they call Read to Kids and it was kind of, it's kind of neat. She sent me a link yesterday and their employees sat down in front of a video camera with their favorite book and they're reading that book with the kids and she shared it and there's, what I like is that we have a parent that is on there from one of our kiddos who are at school, so they can watch that. And there are a number of Hispanic virgins on there, which is really good, so those, those kiddos have something they can look at too. So thank them. The Modern Woodman Youth Group gave us a nice box of Happy Mittens that they donated to the school, which was great. And Delta Dental, Julie won a prize from them. And we have water bottles that we were able to distribute to all of the elementary students this week, so. I'm done.
All right, junior, senior high, so I guess over the past few weeks, just to echo the thoughts on conferences, just coming from the staff, same thing, very good feedback on the format this year with the, using basically the phone and calling the parents, you know, we targeted the kids that, that the teachers felt that they really wanted to connect, maybe that were at risk or, or behind at that point in the, in the semester, so. And collectively, if you look at the numbers, you know, just going by what the teachers have said from the past years, you know, probably 10 times, you know, as many parents that were contacted versus if we just had the doors open and people come in. So very good feedback on that and again, looking to, to continue that platform there for the, for the spring conferences as well. Just looking at schedule wise, I know we talked about it somewhat too, but that's been kind of going on over the past couple weeks. Met with the sixth grade team and talked a little bit about that middle school concept and what that would look like. And did this week, last week was the end of kind of that halfway point. So looking at midterm grades and midterm grade reviews at the beginning of this week and kind of seeing where we're at with kids on what we would say like our, our below average list and kind of identifying what their needs are and what we can do to put some supports in place. So we can see some improvement in that capacity. We, our, our special education resource person has settled in very nicely and we have our ELL assistant then working a lot with, with Megan on some Title III stuff and, and getting her into some classrooms and trying to help out in that capacity as well too. Looking ahead, over the next few weeks here then, virtual band and choir concert as well. They're going to be recording that, one of them is actually going to be recording tomorrow. So they'll have those ready by the end of the week to be pushed out on Greyhound TV. Also then, continue to discuss and get feedback from the staff on, on that master schedule. Because we know that's, and Becky's working on, Becky Shear's working on updating the course description book and reflecting any, with a lot of new staff and a lot of younger staff. They have some different, you know, twists that they would like to put in place and maybe some different courses that they would like to offer or renaming courses. So that'll all get updated, it's really close right now, so that'll be something for you all to look at then, at the January meeting. Looking ahead also then, kind of those informational meetings for, in a sense, on master schedule for parents and picking some days here after the Christmas holiday to set some of those up and then also getting in and I, talking with students collectively by grade then about, about the way ahead there and getting some feedback from them as well. Looking at January 4th is an in-service day for staff, so Nancy and I and Chris have been talking about some things maybe we could do for a half day there to start that professional development. That is one area that, you know, has been tough at the, this beginning of the year and, and we really haven't had PD time with them because it's just been so busy. And now with the revisions, we all feel that we kind of committed to at least a half a day every month. And so we've been talking about some different ideas and some stuff that we can do with the staff on that half day as well. Then closing out for the end of semester one, which it's hard to believe, it's going to come up really quick as soon as we get back from break and we'll be halfway through the school year. So what does that end of the semester look like? And then looking at any schedule changes, challenges with students and revisiting any schedules for kids to start that third quarter. Started interviews, had interviews today for the open special education position. Had two, two nice candidates we interviewed today, we'll have another one on Friday. And then we'll look ahead to that Title I position that we have posted as well to focus on the junior high area. And those interviews will probably either take place early next week or we'll look at maybe having to schedule those after we get back from Christmas break. Becky's working on the class registration plan for grades eight through 11. As I said earlier, that'll start late January and continue into February. Our winter sports seasons are all in full swing and going very well. I think to Friday will be the end of the junior high boys basketball. I think that's their last game on Friday. And then the girls will be prepping to start for the junior highs. So it's, like I said, all things have been going very well. It's nice to see the kids getting that activity and, and people coming to events. It's been very helpful. And lastly, just aggressively pursuing options for our Spanish. We're going to have our, our Spanish teacher going on maternity leave here right around the semester break time. And it's a challenging thing to fill, to find someone that's a Spanish teacher. So we're looking at some different options and leaving everything open, but being pretty aggressive right now because, because it's still something that we don't have a solid plan for. So each day it seems like we get a little bit further and have some good ideas, but it looks like we're, we're, we may be heading in a direction where we might have to look at other schools that are teaching them and delivering them via ITV networks and seeing if we can match up our kids' schedules to when they're delivering their courses. So we can still have kids sitting in a Spanish course that's similar to what they would be getting live, but it would be in a virtual sense, which we're all experiencing a lot of that anyways now. So hopefully we get that nailed down here soon. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Lindner?
Okay. We had a meeting with Myron, facilities plan, it's changed a little bit and we just keep working forward, towards that. And we have another meeting tomorrow with them, Zoom meeting, just kind of verifying where things are. We've had a very good discussion, three of us and Dan going around and kind of looking at things where, what we've met about, whether it's outside or inside. So it's, it's ever evolving with that, but I think making some good progress on where, where we need to be as a facility. Also our FEMA grant, we talked a little earlier about that. Jordan's been working on this and, and our application is about a little more than a month away than we happen to have it done. So we're working on some different things, what, what are we looking at? Is it a dome or is it a regular shelter, not a dome? And what are we looking at doing with that? We've had everything from doing something with our technology, add an egg with it to a gym or wellness art center, so. So we are looking at a number of different things, if it's, if we get this, you know, what we can do with it. So, because we do have to have a, some type of a floor plan in our application. So that's what we've been looking at and trying to decipher, so we will bring that with to you, all right? Also like to congratulate Stephanie and Jordan Donabauer. They had a baby girl a couple weeks ago, so congratulations to them. Mom and baby are doing very well. Board members, we're looking at doing a little Friday morning coffee or hot chocolate this Friday, so. That'll be very good. Last Friday, administration made, we call it brunch, but it was, it was intended to be brunch, but it was lunch at, or breakfast at lunch. Went over very well, had our staff in the gym spaced and it was very nice. So a lot of good compliments on it. Just kind of a thank you to our staff for everything they've done. Little update on COVID numbers wise, quarantined district wide, looking at about 50. Probably get about 15 to 20 of them back Friday. The other ones are out until January 4th, we should have everyone back. And we'll kind of go from there. Want to talk a little bit about, and it's been all right, a lot of people might say 50 is a lot and it's, it's a high number, but. I, I think we've done a very good job, our staff are keeping things rolling, even though kids are in quarantine and we're asking a lot of our teachers to do kind of, you know, extra duty to help, help get these virtual kids or remote kids, make sure that they are where they need to be. That brings me up to the COVID quarantine. So I just want to talk a little bit about what, if there's any questions out there about it, we'll have information on our webpage on the updated version. So we are, as Clark County Health Department, we are still sticking with 14 days, that is the gold standard. For the simple fact that we cannot guarantee 100% that we can mask at all times and social distance at all times, so. But something that I would strongly recommend that we continue to look at, especially in January, when we come back to our monthly meeting after two and a half weeks of being back from break, of, of seeing where we're at. Talking with administration, you know, feeling like 10 days is a good, is a good compromise. But for right now, until we get through the break and, and back, I would recommend 14 days, I would still keep with that. As far as staff members, I think we could take that as an individual basis when we get into January where, for an example, a night custodian would be able to do the six days, get tested and come back, or the 10 days, because they are socially distanced, there's only two people here at night, so they would be able to social distance and mask, so. Those are some things that we can, we can take a look at and I'll present in, in January about. Big thing has been the, the social distance and dealing with athletes of keeping them out 14 days. So there are, you know, there are basically three options there if you want to look at it, it's a 14 days. Or the 10 day option, where they would quarantine at all times through day 10 and then you have the seven day option, where they could get a PCR test on day six and they still have to watch for symptoms, they still have to be aware of the situation, so. As of right now, just like. So as of right now, just like other Clark County schools, we are on 14. So, um, there's been a discussion, um, for the last week between the Supers and Clark County Health. So we will continue looking at that and, and going through that. I would just like to thank our staff and administration and our board. Mr. Deekman just said we are three weeks from halfway through the school year and knock on wood, we have been open and, uh, we've had some bumps. But, um, I think, I think it's a lot because of, of our staff and the board and then our administration and even our parents working with us to make sure that they wanted school open. And, um, I appreciate all the efforts of, of everyone. A lot of people doing a lot of extra to make sure that we are open and we have kids in our building. So, um, I know there's times where we don't have as many kids, but, um, the more we get, the more time we can be here at school, the better learning they are, they are receiving or they're, they're getting. And, um, so I just, uh, very grateful for that. And for all the effort. Lastly, I would just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. Um, have a safe, uh, safe break, everyone. Just a reminder to parents, uh, if you're getting tested, uh, please keep your students home and tell you no or you have symptoms. Keep them home and tell you no for sure. Um, that, that helps us immensely, uh, with the quarantine and the contact tracing. Really, I think for the first three quarters of our summer, our semester so far where we're at has helped us a lot. We have one or two here or there that has caused a little ripple, but, um, just, just remember that, please. All right, that's another thing that we'll throw on our webpage also, just a reminder. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so we need to set some meeting dates. It looks like, um, Buildings and Grounds on for January, uh, to present. So, um, with everything that going on with the FEMA and the Myron grants, how do you all know? Doesn't matter.
I would say that earlier in January, the better.
Do you have any, uh, when's your next meeting with Myron? Yes, they're tomorrow.
Tomorrow is, is, uh.
Do you have anyone scheduled after that?
No. Later in January, I believe.
So that's, um, Carlin, Davy and Kara. Are there certain date or time you guys would meet?
Doesn't matter. What's the, preferably?
Wednesday?
About Wednesday the 6th.
I'd have to wait, my hour just got here, he's going on vacation for, uh, I can come late, if you guys do like at 8:00.
That's fine, me.
That's fine. Yes, he's still there late?
Any, um, besides the regular board meeting, does anyone, do we get any other meetings?
Just a thought, do we need to prove anything prior to the, for the FEMA grant? You said that's due the 20th, is that due? And I was just thinking, just wondering if we should make that, you know, a special board meeting or something? Or, you know, we needed to approve it, prove something or not, I guess.
If we could approve the floor plan, or what it's done up like, we may want to do something.
And he wants that preliminary one early January, right? That first week, I think, somewhere, what he was talking.
But you certainly could do it a different time to a different date even. And I just wanted us to think about that, probably having to have something prior to our regular board meeting if we have to get that approved.
Let, let me talk to Jordan and then we'll get someone else.
Oh, special.
Yep, yep.
I am not available for our board meeting next month. Kara, I think you'll be okay with, you want me to know the appointment? Um, I'll be unavailable for about two weeks. So you can just, definitely you can reach out to me, but.
Our meeting's on the 20th, right?
What's that?
Our meeting's on the 20th.
Our meeting would be on the?
20th.
20th, the 20th, yeah. So I will not be available for that.
Do you want it moved so you can?
The only other time I could do it would be like the 6th. And that's might be just too early. I'll be unavailable from the 11th through the 26th.
I mean, I'm fine doing it, but if you, I mean, if there is or isn't a reason that we can't move it so you can, I, I think, I don't know, everybody else.
Can, can virtually?
No.
No, okay, okay. Then no, then no.
I'm going to be on medical leave for a little while, so, yeah.
Okay, okay, not a problem.
Yep. I want you to think I was going to jail or anything. I don't know. Oh, I wish. I can do, I really think, um, if we don't have anything pressing for January, I think you guys will be just fine. Um, but if everyone feels more comfortable, we could certainly do it, um, earlier in the month.
Hello?
Makes me no difference.
Why don't you decide if you want to do it, do you, if you want to do it later or earlier?
I would, I really think it'd be okay.
Yeah, I will, I just didn't, you know, if you wanted to.
Yep, I could, um, we could have Chris, if you wanted to get the agenda early, you and I could all meet with Chris prior to the meeting to review the agenda, get everything ready.
So the 20th?
Yep, I think you guys will be fine. So the 20th, um, will be your meeting. So maybe, um, Chris, you could plan to have the agenda kind of drafted by the, you know, the, by the age of the older. That would be my last available to meet about, so. Um, but I could always join you guys by Zoom or something.
I was going to have Lisa from Baird come and talk, but available until February. I think these are January, February.
She's one of our, I really like to meet her.
Okay.
And then in February, finance and policy will present. So, um, do we need any policy meetings with, um?
We would need something probably end of January, a curriculum type meeting for any new classes. So.
All right, uh, any public comments coming, Mr. Linder? Yeah, if there's nothing else, I would please, um, take a look at your journal.
I'll make that one.
Davy, hold on favor.
Hi.
So a very Merry Christmas, everyone.